Well, I am in video production, you know, I gotta kind of raise the bar.
We just have my office.
I just hope I don't disappear on you guys.
Well, I had the surfing goats as my background at the coastal commission meeting, and so I was on a wave with the goat right next to me. And I was, nobody even commented. I don't even know what to say.
Yeah, the surfing goats are awesome. Okay.
All right.
Well, we are good to go.
It's four o'clock and it's time for our learning curve summit. And today's guests are, we have Jorge Garcia, who is acting city manager while Jim Lewis is on vacation, and he is our management service director. We have Mayor Pro Tem Eric Howell visiting us today, and we have Councilwoman Sheila Blake. And we also have Joanne Curry, owner of Splash Cafe Restaurant in Pismo and San Luis Obispo. And of course, myself, Lisa, your chairwoman for the Chamber of Commerce and Valerie Mercado, who is our vice chair.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for joining us. So I wanted to start by having Jorge and Sheila and Eric, you know, of course, introduce yourself again and maybe talk a little bit about your background and how long you've been involved with the city. Who wants to go first? Jorge, you're the newest, aren't you?
I am, but I will defer to our elected city officials to start us off.
All right, sounds good. All right, Sheila.
Ladies first.
Ladies first. Oh, are you on mute, Sheila? Are you on mute?
Okay, let me try that.
All right. All right.
I've been a city official for about, I guess, six, eight years, I guess. I come from the airline industry. I spent a long time in the airline industry and all different functions except pilot. And I'm anxious to do, I'm anxious to do something for this city and not do something for myself, which I'm seeing more and more prevalent these days. But that's, that's pretty much what I'm interested in, and I need to take credit for the parklet idea. Remember, I tried to put parklets in downtown and they failed miserably, so, so there.
There you have it.
They're coming back.
All right, Eric?
Well, hopefully the parklets will come back a little safer than some of the previous ones. Um, yeah, I'm Eric Howell, and I'm trying to figure out, who else is on here? Is it just the six of us?
It's the six, well, it's the six of us, but we have 20 people that are watching right now.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. I'm like, wait a minute, I think we all know each other. Yeah, so I've been on the council for, I guess, coming up on eight years now.
Wow.
And before that, I was on the Lucimar School Board for 16 years. These are hard times for everybody, but I am optimistic that we are going to turn it around and come out stronger on the other side.
As are we.
As are we, yes. And Jorge?
Jorge, you're up. And maybe let people know that, yeah, you're acting, but city manager, because we were getting questions about, you know, where's Jim, where's Jim? So.
Acting, uh, acting city manager, extraordinary.
There you go, yeah.
Thank you for the vote of confidence, Mayor Pro Tem. So I'm Jorge Garcia, I'm the Management Services Director for the City of Pismo Beach, which means I oversee the areas of human resources, risk management, communications, our city clerk, and special projects for the city. So right now I am acting city manager, which means that I'm overseeing city operations while our city manager, Jim Lewis, is on vacation. I'm sure there was some confusion because our neighboring city, Arroyo Grande, has acting city manager as well, but that's for a very different reason.
Right.
So right now I'm just working with the city council and the rest of the executive team in order to continue operations during this time. And really, my main function and what most people probably will be familiar with me is our communication strategy for the seat, for the city as well as media interviews for the city. So most of the time, people think that I'm the city's PIO, which I do function in that role. But a lot of what I do is special projects and human resources as well.
And you've been with the city how long?
A year and a half.
Okay.
So I've been here a year and a half. I'm a transplant from Orange County. So I married and have two young children, and we are fortunate enough to live here in the City of Pismo Beach.
Well, welcome, and it sounds like you wear many hats.
Indeed.
Well, thanks for being on the call today, very much, all of you. And then Joanne, of course, I'm sure everybody knows Joanne with Splash Cafe. Everybody knows Splash Cafe.
Joanne, tell us a little bit about yourself, though.
Oh, well, about myself, goodness.
You like clam chowder.
I've had Splash Cafe for 28 years. I love it completely and dedicated to Pismo Beach. Had my San Luis location for 15 years and just hoping that we can all come through this together and constructively and positively and, and to keep, keep all our wonderful people from the valley coming to Pismo.
Sounds good.
So we have our first question, and I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and ask it, and it's actually, I think it's more for Jorge. Jorge, everybody wants to know, when is the Pier Plaza and Pier going to open?
So that's a great question, and we've been asked that a lot. So we are putting the final touches on the construction right now. There's two components that we're still waiting on. They're finishing all of the paver install. So those final cuts and the detail work that typically take the longest. And then the other big portion is the single piece slide that will go from the Pier Plaza down to the sand and then the guardrail for the ADA access. So those components, we are waiting on installation. I think the concrete slide should be coming in about two to three weeks. So we are thinking in about a month, it'll be complete. That being said, with the current conditions with COVID, we may not be able to open up that Pier Plaza as it is essentially a gathering place.
Right.
So we, we're gonna try to be strategic about that. We understand that the community wants that open, but we also want to make sure that we're doing it responsibly.
Yeah, that's very true. I know everybody's excited to probably have their picture taken next to those awesome Pismo Beach sign. I mean, it's beautiful, the whole plaza looks great.
So I can, I can let you know that the lights do work. We have tested them, so they do work. We won't start lighting them just yet, but the lights do work, and from what our engineering staff tells me, it looks fantastic.
Nice, that's awesome. And so, once the promenade opens, are you still hoping to open the pier at the same time? What plan is?
That would be the goal, and as a reminder, on the pier, we are going to have three air streams that will be coming onto the pier. And we should be receiving those at the city in that same next month timeframe, so we should be able to get all of those components completed right around the same time. And that's a food airstream that'll have food, beer and wine sales, an airstream that'll be our visitor information center, and then the third airstream will be housing the bait shack. So the Sheldon family will be returning onto the pier with that third airstream trailer.
Well, and along the lines of the opening the pier, I think the issue is less about opening the pier as opposed to allowing people to socially distance while getting onto the pier. The plaza is still closed and it's still an construction site, and it's just not safe for people going out onto the pier while they're going through the narrows that you can't even see people around the corner while construction takes place.
Yep, that's very true. As excited as we all are to have it open, we have to have it open in a safe manner. That's, that's number one. So, yeah, and I never even thought about Jorge, how it is a gathering place. So that's a, that's a great point.
Yep, but, but on the same token, I know a lot of the businesses, you know, are hopeful that it's gonna be opening. Of course, there's more space there for people to eat now that things have changed again here recently with the governor's mandates, and now there's no, you know, in restaurant dining, that's, that's gonna cause, again, more people outside. I know we've continued to have the challenges of trash and things of that nature, and is trying to figure out how we can kind of all work together to make everything work for everybody. But in addition to the restrooms, because those restrooms aren't open, and so that's causing people to look for restrooms at our business community, and, you know, so it's just this whole push. And just getting to a place where, you know, we can all work together to make this make sense for everybody, I guess.
I will have an ask for those that are on the call that have businesses, to the extent you have a restroom facility and you can make that available to those doing business at your establishment, whether it's food or retail business, that would definitely help alleviate it. Because we do not have enough capacity, even if we open those restrooms.
Right.
Again, we're, we're putting the finishing touches on that construction site. We do not have enough capacity. So to the extent that folks can open their bathrooms, that'll relieve some of the congestion and will definitely help the experience downtown for everyone.
Jorge, there's another question here about the air streams that are going to be put on to the pier. And this question is, is beer and wine going to be to-go, or will there be a roped-off area to drink on the pier?
It'll be a roped-off area. It is not beer to go. So it will be, the first diamond is where that's going to be on the north side. So that is the area where beer and wine can be consumed. It cannot be consumed down on the beach, so it is not, grab a six-pack and go down to the beach. It is intended to enjoy while you're on that first diamond and ideally, hopefully, enjoying it with an appetizer or another food option.
Really nice.
And as far as trash within the city, you know, I know, again, we've transitioned back and forth a couple of times. We've maintained our Pismo Beach Chamber, beach cleanups every Sunday at 8:00 AM. Thank you again, Lisa, because she's down there every Sunday doing that, which is super helpful. And in addition to actually, a lot of people walking the streets now of Pismo Beach and picking up trash and a lot of cigarette butts. So that's been helpful, and I, and I believe the downtown business community restaurants primarily have opted to put trash cans outside of their establishments to kind of help alleviate that also, and that the city has come to the table and assisted in increasing staffing on their side to assist with those efforts also. So I believe that the trash has been better. But, you know, I don't know, Joanne, I know, and Sean from Cool Cats are on, so if you guys have noticed that the downtown area has been better, I know it's tough because of the clam shells with people eating downtown and not necessarily will be back in a place where they won't have a place to dine in. So I don't know if that'll kind of recreate the problem we initially had.
I think it's been a little bit better. I know that my dumpster that I have been keeping out on the street in the little spot next to Brad's driveway, I've been keeping it out there for the last month or more, is filled very regularly, and obviously, nobody's not dining in.
And, you know, I don't know Eric or Sheila or even Jorge, you know, as you guys are out and about and, and doing walkthroughs or drive-arounds, if you guys are noticing anything as it relates to the trash or anything like that on the streets?
I, I think things have definitely gotten better, but I worry with this slight re-closing that it has potential to go back to where it was before. I, I know that we have all hands on deck for, for picking up trash. I'm really proud of our city employees for the work that they've done. And I think, and I, I hope I'm correct, that some of the businesses have dialed back on the amount of packaging that they use in terms of putting the food out there. You know, I, I think when it first started is, okay, well, each, each thing has to be prepackaged. Everything needs a clam shell, everything needs its own separate packaging. And I get the feeling that, and I could be wrong, you're the Chamber of Commerce, that, that everybody's dialed that back a little bit too, and I see huge improvements, to tell you the truth. And on that note, Lisa, can you share with everybody the link to publicize the beach cleanup days on Sunday? I would totally forward that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll send that off, but it's on, I put it on Facebook every, well, during the week, but every Saturday, I think we put a big push out there again. We've had as many as like 30 people, a lot of them from Harry's Bar have been coming to help us clean up, and we have a few regulars that are out there all the time. And what's nice is we have some restaurant sponsors, Splash Cafe, Cool Cats, and Beach and Biscuits, they give us gift certificates. So it's, it's just a nice morning. We're there Sunday at 8:00 in the morning, every Sunday. And even though there's no drinking on the beach, there's drinking on our beach.
Drinking on the beach.
We, we pick up a lot of bottles.
What's, what's the craziest thing? Because I know a lot of things have come up from the beach, Lisa, and some things we probably don't want to mention, but what, you know, I know there was a huge umbrella one time, right, that was left, like, out there behind?
You know, the worst thing, well, diapers, dirty diapers are left on the beach. But I have to say, though, the, probably the worst thing that I've gone to some of the businesses and asked them if they could help us is those little nets that are around the beach toys, they're around the bucket to keep the sand, the shovel and all the toys together. We find a lot of those on the beach, and then, of course, once those nets get into the ocean, that's really not a, not a good thing. So we have asked some of the businesses if they could cut the toys out of those nets. And some have said yes, and also, a lot of just on the streets, price tags coming off of sweatshirts, t-shirts. So we're asking people too, if they could just go ahead and cut that tag off. And they said, you know, one, one office said, well, what about if they want to return it? And it's like, well, you shouldn't be taking returns right now anyways during COVID. They take the sweatshirt out, they, they should have to keep it, there should be no returns. But I'd have to say, you know, alcohol bottles is a problem because they're buried, broken bottles, and then some other things that, that.
We won't mention.
On, on the air, but we can talk about it another time, Eric.
But yeah, as a reminder, just, you know, anybody coming to any of the beach communities to please either bring a trash bag with you. You know, we just ask you to be respectful of our beach communities. They're beautiful and amazing, and, you know, we're very fortunate to still have our beach open. So we would appreciate you picking up any trash at any time, and just know that the chamber will always be behind that and help make that happen.
That's another thing that we do, and we do see large families with their wagons or a lot of food. I always offered them a trash bag for their day, so.
So I don't know that we've heard, or that we have many people on here, maybe with, you know, salons in the beach community, you know, now that they've got to close again, I believe as of midnight tonight, is that correct? Anybody? Is that?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Is that correct?
Eric, you're on mute.
I thought it was 5:00 today, and I might have it wrong.
Jorge, do you have?
Night anyway.
Jorge, are you there?
He's on mute.
Okay, let's see.
Sorry about that. Can, can you repeat that? I was having a wall.
So just reiterating those businesses that have to close, and that's as of 12:01 tonight, right, today?
So it was actually as of 12:01 AM this morning, and just to reiterate what those businesses are, that's gyms and fitness centers, places of worship, indoor protests, offices for non-critical infrastructure sectors, personal care services, including nail salons, massage parlors and tattoo parlors, hair salons and barber shops, and then malls. But that mall, we did get a clarification, is inside malls.
Right.
So our outside outlet mall can continue to operate.
Okay.
And retail establishments can continue to operate.
Right. There, there's mention and I think concern within our community about hotels being next. And, you know, I know with the chamber, we still get quite a few calls coming in on a daily basis, you know, people wanting to come into the area to visit and, you know, asking if the beaches are open, if the restaurants are open. And so it's kind of a back and forth of, you know, are we encouraging them, are we discouraging them, you know? So if you want to speak to that, any city council, that would be great also.
I wanted to tell you that part of, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I wanted to tell you that part of the, the solution to the trash problem was that we changed the hours of service for the guys that pick up all the trash. They originally had a shift that ended at 4:00 in the afternoon, and then everybody went home, which doesn't make much sense. So we've now changed the shift time, and we've got guys picking up trash much later, much later in the day, which is a big help.
I think, yeah, I think that's definitely made a difference. Thank you for that, Sheila.
Yeah, I've seen the guys from the city later in the day, and in the morning, when we're out there, I see them and always thank them and for being out there also, and, and they always say, you guys are out here again this weekend? It's like every Sunday.
Yeah.
Yep. So Eric, what do you, what do you think about that?
About the hotels closing?
Yeah.
I'll just say, I am militantly opposed to the hotels closing. I think that our hoteliers have done all the right things in, in keeping their, their guests deep. I see, I see mandatory mask-wearing. The staff are wearing masks, they're requiring masks of their guests. I see them cleaning the credit card pad. I see, I see everything that can to protect their guests. And from, from what we've seen in the past, there hasn't been any transmission from, you know, any transmissions in the hotels. So if we're following the streets, which I think we should, and I think it's been the consensus among our health director in our county and certainly among our council, the hotels will continue to be open.
Right, so, because as far as I, you know, I have heard, the tourists haven't been an issue, that it's been more of people, you know, doing private gatherings and things of that nature that where it's causing families to get COVID, and that's kind of where our numbers have gone up more. But again, that's just what, what we've heard, anyway.
What I see statewide and probably nationwide is opening, opening the bars and allowing the inside gatherings is, is where the problem's been, and people not wearing masks.
Right.
And I think we're going to continuously spread as long as people continue to gather and not wear masks. But certainly, hotels, to their credit, have been responsible in a way that I can only commend them.
And the city actually provided our hoteliers with City of Pismo Beach masks, is that correct?
Yes.
Well.
So the L-Bid funds paid for those masks. We did receive some inquiries a few weeks ago from businesses, retail businesses, wanting to know if they could get some of those as well. And the reason that we did not give those to all businesses is because those were purchased and paid for by L-Bid dollars. So the lodging partners that participated in that program were the ones who received them since they used their dollars for that.
And how many masks did you guys have?
8,000 bandanas were purchased and distributed, and then we purchased approximately 16,000 hand sanitizers that were distributed. So I did speak with Gordon Jackson, our Tourism and Events Director, and he has noticed that on TripAdvisor and some of the other travel sites, a lot of the guests are commenting about how Pismo Beach has been very proactive in making people feel safe and to have bandanas and hand sanitizers if they forgot those. So people have been appreciative, and I think that that'll pay long-term dividends for the entire community and then the entire business community, for that matter, because of that.
Nice.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard.
Jorge, Sheila?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I drive up and down Pomeroy at least probably once a day, and I like to try and observe something different every day. And there's so many posters and papers plastered in the entries of the businesses. It's very hard to see the no, no mask, no, no service. I can't imagine there's someone that doesn't know this so far. But you know what? I need to ask Lisa this question. Why aren't we, or why isn't somebody making commercials about COVID, showing people in the hospitals what, what they're going through? Apparently, people think that COVID is some form of the flu or a bad case of the cold. Why can't we put up a scare video that shows these people hooked up to ventilators and suffering and having trouble breathing? I think most of these people don't understand what we're talking about.
You know.
Wait, why is that a question for Lisa again?
Oh, she does videos.
No, Val does the videos. Val, Val. The other way, the other way.
We're kind of like, we're kind of like one, so it's okay.
No, you, you are, you are right, because a lot of people, they, they think that this is a hoax, or this is what, depending on what your political party is, that it has to do with voting. I myself don't think that. My sister, a workmate of hers passed away from COVID. My husband has a friend who has lost two family members to COVID. COVID is not a joke. And it, I believe I just read about a newborn baby that has COVID from, you know, it's not a joke. There are long-term effects from COVID, and I think that we all have to be extremely diligent in protecting ourselves and our community. We have to do it for each other.
And interesting that Sheila mentions that, because, so we ended up putting out a survey, of course, to the business community, which I think you guys are all aware of. We have about 40 responses currently. One of the questions on that survey was if we did a video marketing campaign, what would that be? So far, the majority has been letting people know to be respectful, to wear their masks, you know, when they come into Pismo Beach, things of that nature. So, you know, I'm sure with collaborative efforts between the chamber and the city, if that's something and a direction we want to go in, I would imagine we have the resources and the ability to do something like that. It's just determining what that messaging is and getting it produced and getting it out. But there, I mean, if anybody watches TV, I watch a lot of TV, because that's the business that I'm in, and there are a lot of PSAs running on TV in regards to COVID and the three Cs and wearing a mask and social distancing and everything else. But Sheila, to speak to what you're saying specifically, there, there isn't that type of message. You know, it's kind of like that, and I hate to go to it, but the message where you see the, the dogs in the crates and crying, and it's a sad thing, and everybody wants to change the channel because it's freaking them out, and they don't want to see that, but that's the reality of, of what this is and where we're at. And we have our own nurses and our own doctors and our own hospitals here that I'm sure that that will resonate even better with our own locals if we were able to put something out like that. So maybe that's something we have a further discussion about, you know, after the fact. So thanks for bringing that up, but, but yeah, we can produce video.
Yeah. I, I know in my store, and it's, you know, I'm only talking about my store, everybody wears a mask, and my door is locked in between. Everybody wears a mask and my door is locked in between customers. I hand sanitize. People get their temperature taken. We just all have to be careful. You know, that's how I'm conducting my business. Um, I think that people need to conduct their businesses, you know, whatever works for them. But, um, I'm being, as you know, I've just got done finishing breast cancer treatments in April. So, um, I, I'm being very cautious and I think everybody should be. I'm not saying don't go out and don't get your food takeout. And I, I'm not saying any of that. Go to your restaurants, visit our local restaurants. But everybody should be, um, they should be a little safer.
And, um, speaking of the mask wearing and, you know, uh, we've gotten some calls recently and messages, um, from some of the business community that other members of the business community are not wearing masks. And so they are frustrated that they're doing their part and them and their employees are wearing their masks, but that there's other people in the business community that aren't. Um, but we also know that people from the health department and/or city council has been going through town and, and checking out, you know, the business community wearing masks. And occasionally Lisa and I will also do that. Um, but they certainly aren't interested in, um, snitching on each other, I guess, and reporting it. So they would rather come and say, you know, this is kind of happening behind the scenes. Can you guys make sure that this is at least mentioned today, which I'm doing on behalf of a handful of businesses? So, um, just be aware of that. And it is important that if we're asking people coming into our community that wear masks, that we would ask that you, business owners and employees also be respectful and wear masks. Not everybody wants to do it. And some people like Lisa, her doctor has recommended that she not always wear a mask. But if you're going to be out, that's just kind of where we're at right now. So, um, it is very important that everybody be wearing masks out there. But, you know, ha- have any of you encountered anything different out there in the business community? You're all on mute, by the way.
So I, I can, um, respond a little bit. I think what we've seen overall, especially from our businesses is compliance. Um, a- and that's the direction that the city council, um, asks staff to pursue. So we have gone and done, uh, periodic checks of our ordinance. And remember, we were the first, uh, city in, in the county to do so. Um, so the city council definitely took a leadership position in that. And, and what we've seen by and large is employees definitely have, have been abiding by it. I think, uh, we've been doing our part in trying to communicate that, uh, while we know that we're not going to get a hundred percent compliance from the general public, uh, for various reasons. I think our responsibility is, uh, is and has been to make sure that, uh, our employees are safe. And I think that's, um, what's of utmost importance for our own city employees and then also for, uh, the employees that the, uh, chamber represents. Um, and I think as long as we continue to do our part, hopefully see, uh, low numbers and, uh, that we can hopefully get to a point where we can, um, open all of our sectors, uh, backed up to operations so that we can continue to.
Jorge, do you think that, um, enforcing mask wearing from our, um, visitors and the people just out walking the streets? Do you think that that is something that our city should be doing by enforcing people to wear those masks?
So, uh, that definitely gets into a difficult area. So one of the things I think to, to remember and to stay focused on, uh, for our city ordinance is that it is not a criminal violation. It is a violation of the municipal code. And it's something that primarily rests actually in code enforcement, uh, in, in terms of enforcement. You know, I, I, I think the question as to how do we, uh, continue to make sure that we're safe as a community is to continue to take individual protections and, and to know what we're comfortable with. Ultimately is, is a risk question and what each person feels comfortable with and each person's medical history. Uh, I, I know for myself, being, being a, a healthy person, um, you know, I'm still wearing a mask myself and, and being cautious around, uh, different people. But at the same time, um, I know that that's not the situation for everyone. You know, as has been discussed, different people have different circumstances. So it's, it's incumbent upon each person to make those decisions for their family and, and what they feel comfortable with. Uh, and I think as, as long as we go into this with, um, good intentions, um, you know, and we continue to, um, to be safe and, and to, um, have safe practices, I, I, I think we can definitely get out of this.
I agree with that.
Good points.
Yeah.
And keep in mind that Pismo is a very hard town to police because it's so long and slender. And we're still trying to put together the Shell Beach, um, Improvement Group, uh, area. And we have only a certain amount of police and I'm glad nobody has led a demonstration to defund the police because we need these guys and they're really, really good at what they do. And as far as trying to police people wearing, uh, masks, we couldn't even get a, a, a resolution passed to have more teeth in it than what we have now. So, uh, it would be almost impossible to actually enforce a, a mask ordinance. What we have to do is hope that these people are not too stupid to understand that they are wearing a mask to protect other people and that they should be looking to somebody else to wear a mask to protect them. So anyway, and Jorge, can you tell them about, um, the policeman Anderson and what he did?
Uh, sure, I'd be happy to. So, um, on the Nextdoor app, which we're seeing more and more traction on, one of our officers, Officer Anderson, uh, was complimented by a resident in our community. Of course, uh, we never want to see anyone be a victim of a scam, uh, or any kind of predatory lending or anything like that. But unfortunately, one of our residents was and, um, as a result of a, a cyber scam, was putting out, um, you know, credit card, purchasing gift cards, um, to try to resolve a scam issue. Our officer arrived, uh, and walked them through what to do, how to proceed. Um, and I think the, the biggest component of, um, the comments, uh, from the individual was the, the poise, uh, that, uh, Officer Anderson demonstrated in calming, um, you know, the, the victims, uh, of this crime, which is unfortunate. Uh, I think that really speaks, um, to the culture of the police department, uh, led by Chief Miller. And ultimately the, um, city council, um, demonstrating their commitment to excellent training and standards for our officers. We are a Kalia accredited agency and I think that this is just one example of the daily interactions that the men and women of the Pismo Beach Police Department have, uh, with the community. I, I, I think we take a, a, a different approach in having a very professional police department and making sure that, uh, in all the interactions that they have, uh, whether it's with a resident, a business owner, uh, a visitor, uh, or, or a child that approaches them and asks them for a sticker. You know, that it's, it's our commitment to service and, uh, it really is just one example of, I think, the daily interactions that we see, uh, here in Pismo Beach and what makes us unique.
And you've mentioned that before, Lisa.
Yeah. I, I have to agree with that. I, I think that, um, I love our Pismo Beach community. I mean, Val always laughs at me because often I get teary eyed when I talk about Pismo Beach. But I love our community and I think that we have one of the best police departments I have ever seen. They are great with people. Um, just Jake, I mean, the way he interacts with people on the street and, and the other police, you know, Jody and, and the sergeant, we just took cookies over there, um, a couple of weeks ago. We took cookies to the fire departments and the police department and to Public Works. And, um.
Wait, Lisa, what about City Hall?
Oh. You're next. You're next.
Jorge.
Running to eat cookies, Jorge.
All right.
We do. I, I really feel like we have such a great tight-knit community. It is so nice to see. And I myself was just in Shell Beach today, um, having lunch at Zoro's and Shell Beach is looking so beautiful. That streetscape is looking really nice, which one of the questions are, when will the streetscape be done?
Or ten.
That's a great question. So, uh, streetscape is currently being paved right now. Well, they'll, they'll start paving, uh, in the next day or so.
Okay.
Uh, but they've now grinded down the street, uh, so the asphalt portion will be coming in. Uh, we anticipate that that'll be done in the next ten days. Um, the street lights, uh, half of them are lit right now. So if you happen to drive i- in the evening hours, uh, you'll see the streetlights are now on.
There's already been pictures of those.
Yes. So, um, I'd ask that people go and take a look and, and take a look at the lights. I think from going from no lights to having lights on, of course, initially is going to be an adjustment, uh, no doubt about that.
Yeah.
Uh, but in the areas, uh, especially next to, uh, Terrace and Vista Del Mar, where there are some apartments, we are working with those residents, put some shielding, um, so that the light doesn't, uh, go into their bedrooms and their living rooms.
Yeah.
So it's an adjustment period. Uh, they just went on and, and we, uh, we think that at the end of it, it's going to be a great project. I think that multi-use path has gotten more traffic on it than we ever anticipated, even at, at this point. So we continue to look forward to, to having that be completed, but we have an estimated completion there of August tenth. Plus or minus a few days, uh, to get some punch list items done. Um, but we're, we're excited about that project. I think, uh, it's, it's a definitely, it's been a, a worthwhile investment and we appreciate the, uh, businesses and the residents, uh, hanging in there with us.
Yeah, it looks great. It looks great. I want to kind of go back to, um, where Sheila mentioned how the downtown streets, um, are narrow and long. And so, um, we actually have a, a meeting with the downtown community, mostly the restaurants, every Wednesday at nine o'clock. And we kind of discuss what's happening downtown specifically. And that all kind of started with the trash and the tables that we had initially put out there for, uh, restaurants to have. And that's now turned into a discussion, um, of what can we do now that there's no, um, indoor dining? What can we do in the downtown community to, to help the restaurant community? For those up on price, I think it's a little bit easier. They have parking lots and they can kind of transition. But our downtown community is a little bit more challenging. We have to be more creative if we can be at all. Um, and so I know Sean of Cool Cats has brought up a couple of ideas and concepts in this. This past Wednesday, we actually came up with two other options and that kind of, um, launched the, the reason why we put out a survey. So we can survey the business community and see if there is in fact interest and if there is in fact a way that we can present that at some point to city council to see if this is something that we can, can consider. Can we, you know, entertain it? Um, we have about forty responses currently. And the majority is for option one at this time. Um, but option two isn't far behind. Lisa, if you want to kind of go over, um, if we can summarize what those options are, so everybody can kind of listen in. I don't know if, um, all the city council has a copy of the survey that we sent out, but, um, this is just in an effort. Again, you know, we're here to support our business community and convey information and try to make it as reasonable to the city for consideration. So these are the two options that collectively we came up with, for the downtown community. So go, go ahead and go with option one.
So before I go ahead and go with that, Sheila and Eric, did you get the survey? Did you get, were you emailed the survey? Val, why don't we make sure we send them the survey? Cause it would really be nice if council can see the questions that we.
Yeah.
Gordon, Gordon got it somehow. He called me today, but, but go ahead, go ahead.
So option number one was, um, the request to eliminate, uh, parking on Pomeroy. That would do two things. It would widen the streets and then we would be able to put, um, maybe some tables and chairs out there. Just take out the parking. And then also with that one, with that option, it would be also closing five parking spaces on Cypress Street at Pomeroy to allow for the trucks to, um, do their deliveries. And then option two was just to eliminate two parking spots in front of a restaurant. So let's just say in front of Cool Cats, take away two spots where they could put some tables and chairs outside there. Cause Cool Cats, Splash Cafe, um, are chipwrecked. All of those restaurants don't have the ability to have, they don't have a parking lot. So they can't put stuff out onto the sidewalk because our sidewalks are so narrow on Pomeroy. So we're trying to come up with some possibilities that they can have areas with more outdoor dining.
And it allows for better social distancing out there. A lot of the feedback we also get is that area, right? Where Woolies is, is that we're funneling people in a very tight space, you know? We're asking to social distance, but yet we're funneling people right there because we haven't opened the promenade. And, you know, that's been pushed back a few times. So if we can just open things up a little bit better. I know it's a little bit more complicated, I think, for our downtown community versus like San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara and all these other, communities that are doing it. But, um, again, you know, it's, it's, you know, up to us to kind of put something together collectively with the downtown business community and, and hope that it's something that city council will entertain once we have all of the, uh, the survey feedback. So.
You know, on Arroyo Grande, they closed off, uh, where Roosters is, there's a driveway to go to the parking behind the restaurants.
Right.
We closed off that little area and put cafe lights and tables and chairs for all the restaurants, not just Roosters, but it's everybody can take food there. Um, and that's worked well for them. So we're just trying to figure out something that we can help our downtown restaurants with additional seating that, that don't have it. Like Woolies has outdoor seating.
Yeah.
But, um.
And I don't know if, uh, Sean or Joanne, if you want to speak to that a little more, since you're kind of in the heart of it.
Well, I would, um, I feel like, uh, when we tried to do the tables before, for instance, the table that I was officially in charge of was across the street and towards the front of the building, whereas where, uh, we're doing all the takeout, everything's out the side on Cypress. So that table was very hard. It was a challenge for us to manage, although we are over there quite a few times a day sanitizing and emptying the trash cans. But because it wasn't near our area, it was much more difficult to manage. If we were able to, for instance, take a couple of parking spots on Cypress, if we were going to go option two, for instance, for us, that would be very beneficial. Uh, if we were able to take a couple of parking spots near Brad's driveway, it would be right in front of where my staff is all the time. And so it would be very easy for us to manage and to, uh, take care of our own tables, not city tables, but our own tables. We would take in and out every night, maintain our own, uh, areas. And I think that would be a great solution for, um, for people and Brad's is okay with it. We've spoken to them about it. Um, I think that's, uh, that either one of those options is a good option, but I think, um, for us specifically, uh, having some tables available for us on Cypress Street would be very helpful.
And Sean, are you there?
Um, I am. And, and I think, you know, kind of what Joanne said, for it to be, for it to work, it almost has to be an extension of your premise. So like for us, it'd be kind of coming right outside and the same as she said, our own tables that we take out every night, bring back in. Our staff would maintain those and serve those just as they would a table inside our restaurant. So it would just give us the ability to extend that premise and, you know, be able to keep our people, um, making money and, and, you know, pay the bills. And keep people safe and, and distance as well at the same time. And I know that the outside is so much easier because it's saying, you know, the bulk of the contamination comes in inside and there's not as much outside. So it just, it just gives us that opportunity to have that space.
And so what are your thoughts or feedback on that, um, Jorge or Eric or?
Eric wanted to say something.
Okay. Eric, you're up.
Well, I rarely do, uh, but, um, uh, yeah, I, I, without, you know, seeing the proposals in front of me, it's, it's somewhat difficult, but it seems to me like, you know, Sean and Joanne are making an awful lot of sense. Um, but one thing I, I think we have to have a conversation. You do know we have a parking advisory commission. And, uh, I can just imagine the hooting and hollering that's going to come out of them. Bet them, right? So, uh.
Don Day is on that committee, right?
What's that, Sean?
Is Don Day on that committee?
I.
We all know Don.
Uh, I have. Uh, I have a good track this week. So um, but I guess, I guess my, I also have. And this is might just be rolling off of being done with the coastal commission meeting uh early today. That also might be an issue of preventing public access to the the parking. I think there, any of these obstacles are totally fixable and we can get around them, go over them. But I I think we also need to talk about where, what we're doing with employee parking. And one of the ways that we can perhaps make everybody more comfortable with this design is where are the employees parking? Uh, in a lot of our downtown, the employees are parking in front of the businesses. They're um, they, we haven't incentivized people to put them somewhere else or found ways that they, we can protect our employees as they're walking back and forth late at night. But also freeing up the parking so that we can do these creative. So I think maybe some brainstorming needs to happen, but I'm can't imagine why we wouldn't want to do everything we could to uh to promote these programs.
So we're getting ready to have a downtown meeting. So I would love Eric, if you and Sheila and um maybe Jorge and Jim, when he gets back. Um, that we have this downtown meeting and we can have a meeting with all the downtown businesses. And maybe we can walk the streets together with our masks on.
With our masks on, social distancing. And Jorge, did you want to speak to that? Cause I would, I know that in conversations previous that, you know, the parking, of course, not being able to have the parking meters fully. Um, and you know, and that that uh monitoring was going to be a concern. But a- again, we're trying to work with the businesses where they they alleviate a lot of that from the city so that the city doesn't have that burden.
Are you there? Uh, yes. So, you know, of course, we're always open to work with the chamber and and its membership. Um, in order to see what solutions we can come up with. Uh, we've tried the tables in the past. Um, you know, sometimes things will work at one point and not another. So we're open to have those conversations and um, to identify the issues that we had and to find solutions to those issues. And if we can resolve that. Um, you know, I think o- on the administrative side, I I I definitely think that um, we're open to seeing what that dialogue would be like. And uh at the same token, if there's a different idea, uh, we can always see if if something else will work.
Right.
Um, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we can sanitize. Um, and I think one of the the biggest issues and some of the feedback that we had gotten from some of the restaurants when we tried the tables out there was we have a lot of day trippers that are coming out that are bringing their own food, that were sitting at those tables for hours. And that weren't um, you know, being patrons of the restaurants. So the restaurants were responsible for maintaining it. Uh, but at the same time, they weren't seeing the revenue coming in. And how do you tell someone, hey, you've been here for too long, it's time to move along?
Can I speak to that real quick? Not to interrupt, but um, just one of the things we talked about is extension of premises. Um, is we would have an extension and even a roped off or cordoned off area where these would be cool cat tables, just the same as they would be inside the restaurant. Joanne's tables would be Splashes tables. Whoever else had tables would be their specific tables. It would be for customer use only. And we would be responsible for those tables, the same as we would be the tables inside our restaurant. So we we would be managing, we would not be allowing other people to use those tables.
So you would be servicing those tables and having, you know, people going up to the tables, taking orders and just servicing just as you would within your restaurant, which I think is a little different than the initial tables that we had set up. That weren't really monitored per se.
Well. We've been, we've been toying with the idea of a promenade, uh, turning Palmeroy into a promenade for for many years. And it never seems to go anywhere. And I I can't say I'm in favor of that. But op- option two sounds like it might actually work because there's other businesses on Palmeroy other than restaurants. And those people might be a little bit uh put off if they saw nobody able to uh to traverse that street. So it and it's only two spaces, two parking spaces per restaurant, which makes a lot of sense to me. And leaves more space for people to drive, which they will insist on doing. And um, I do feel sorry for uh Splash Cafe because they have that side alley where everybody congregates, but uh maybe something could be done there. I don't know. But um, I I'm not in favor of closing off Palmeroy. That's that's my feeling, but what it's worth.
This is to open up the conversation and, you know, just like I said, we're we're just having a conversation, providing feedback. And we'll further the conversation, you know, down the line here very soon, I expect. So um, thanks for your feedback, though. We really appreciate it. And thank you, Joanne and Sean, because they have been instrumental in helping us come up with different ideas and concepts that'll work for the downtown community.
Welcome. So before we close, Sheila, do you have a favorite place where you like in Pismo? A favorite place to shop or eat?
Are there too many? Oh, your your audio. Your audio. Oh, she's talking away.
Okay, is it, is it working now?
Yeah.
I used to like Giuseppe's a lot because of their atmosphere and the uh the servers were very nice. The only time that I ate at Ada's Fish House was very encouraging. I thought they were doing a nice job. And of course, Rosa's, the people that have been in business for a long time, I really, really like.
Nice. What about you, Eric? What are your favorite spots? I've seen you at a couple.
Is this a trick question? I mean. Then you're up for that. I mean, I love.
Don't answer, don't answer. Remember, you're running for reelection. Don't answer.
You like them all equally.
Uh, there we are. There we are. I like them all equally.
Thank you.
Well, that's.
Looking like a true pro ten mayor. Yeah, I'll tell you what, there's, there's so many of them that I like. Um, it it's, it's so hard, you know, I mean, they all have their niche and what they're good at. And we are so lucky in Pismo that we have so many restaurants that are excellent food, excellent service to choose from, so.
So do we have any other questions that, so there were a couple of questions on there. And I don't know if you guys are able to speak to this, but in regards to the Oceano Dunes. Um, we're actually going to have somebody on, I think, next week to speak on that topic because it's been quite the hot topic these days.
Yeah.
What did I say?
Who are you having on to talk about Oceano Dunes?
I can't recall his name at this time.
If only we knew somebody who was on the coastal commission.
Come on, Eric. Come on, Eric.
Well, you can be on again, Eric. But you're you're here now, so so you want to at least give them a little bit of an update or something that they can hang on to right now?
Well, I'm here as a Pismo Beach uh city council member. Um, I can just sort of speak to what actions the coastal commission took. And uh, my understanding is that the consent decree between parks and the coastal commission was that the beach is open for hiking and biking and uh horsing and I don't know, whatever. Things that uh you could imagine. Um, but not open for camping or uh ATV riding.
Right. And is and until, is that currently indefinite or is that through what data as of now?
Uh, I believe it's October 1st. If you told me it was on October 31st, I would believe it. Um, uh, California State Parks is coming back to the coastal commission. I guess in October is the plan. Uh, with a public works plan to to discuss where they and to go forward with uh with how to improve, improve the park and improve the beach. And um, and how they're going to make it accessible to everybody. Um. We're all family here. Uh, I'm skeptical over, given the current environment. That people are working from home. Uh, you can't get together, you can't have really the kind of travel and visits that you would hope to have. I'm skeptical about their ability to make that deadline. And I uh hope they'll take their time and it has to be November or December or January, talk about their public works plan. I would be okay.
Okay, but more to come on that next week on our uh Thursday Zoom. Um, in closing, again, thank you all very much. We really appreciate your time today. Um, and working closely with the Chamber of Commerce because that's hugely important, I think, for everybody involved. And then Jorge, if you wanted to just end on reminding everybody about the car show, you know, for us, Taste of Pismo Beach. Twenty twenty one. Um, and then there's also been questions on the uh the clam fest, if there's any updates as of now on that, um, if we can close on.
Uh, sure. Uh, so the car show has been uh moved to twenty twenty one. Um, the um uh car show uh company that puts that together, uh, they made the decision uh to postpone it as the there there's just not certainty yet as to, could we have an event of that magnitude? Um, during that time. So so that event has been uh postponed. Um, as well as a a lot of other events uh that the city puts on, um, both in the downtown and throughout the city uh have been postponed. So we're trying not to get too far into uh November and December. Uh, just in the event that we can still have some events uh or modify events i- in different ways. Uh, so as of right now, we can announce that um the car show is postponed until twenty twenty one. Uh, we'll be formalizing that at a upcoming city council meeting. Um, clam fest, uh, that decision has not been uh one hundred percent finalized, although uh indicators right now would would point us in that direction.
Okay. Can I interrupt, though? Uh, Jorge, can you tell us about the fireworks show and the Pismo Beach seventy fifth birthday party, I think? Uh, so all this, all this stuff just got approved and it's still ongoing.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Do tell, do tell. Are we invited?
Absolutely. I definitely can uh preview that. So next year, uh, the city actually turns seventy five of its current incorporation. We know that there's uh quite a bit more history uh in Pismo Beach than that. Uh, but in terms of its current incorporation, uh, next year in April, we will celebrate seventy five years. Uh, so the city did get a permit and approval uh through the coastal commission in order to have a a special fireworks show for the seventy fifth anniversary. So that will be in April of twenty twenty one.
Fireworks show.
We we have Taste of Pismo that month also. Are we doing it together?
So we're we're looking at at wrapping some things together and seeing what we can do. Uh, but we definitely want to celebrate that we've been a a a city for seventy five years. Uh, with a lot of rich uh traditions and history. And I think that's something to celebrate and uh we're looking to to do that. So the city council i- is excited about that. Staff is excited about that. So we'll be discussing um. Absolutely. Unexcused party is always a good one. Uh, we definitely are are looking forward to that and making that uh something for the entire community to uh look forward to.
Oh, that's amazing. Great news. Thanks for that. That's a great note to end on. Awesome. Okay. Thanks again, everyone, for joining us.
It's so nice to see you all. Sheila. Sunday at eight o'clock in the morning. I'm down by the pier.
Be there.
Where else would I be?
Stay safe, stay healthy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.